Um.
We're gonna call a public hearing to order. Um, December second, six o'clock, Village Big Ben, public hearing for the general twenty twenty-two village budget. Are there any public comments? Please try and keep them to about two minutes.
Warren, do we have to roll call ourselves in for?
Mm-hmm, there's a public hearing.
Just.
I see.
They were going, a fire truck and ambulance went down towards, down that road and passed the school. I'm on the way here.
Just, uh, two books. Those just, the other one has all the numbers.
Sweet.
No, I can't.
I thought you had brought your or something.
I don't know.
I think it took on some pulses.
Yeah.
Which it all, it all, it all.
Yeah, Frankie.
Check the colors, because they are different. Oh.
Maureen.
Well, this is the one you really love.
The other one was top of it. Probably the best. Most important one.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody never come up with a correct one, did you?
Which? Do it once here. Pardon?
They're both accurate and up to date.
One's got the numbers in and one explains.
And the summary and the detail.
Well, no, there's no real numbers.
Here he gets one. Mine are, mine are ice cubes.
You need to order them. You gotta be authority. Don't listen to me.
I got widens and your marks. They offered my book to Chief, the big one.
She was getting her HPC to see you today.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Better than that?
Yeah, we don't have a few space heaters anymore.
That'll sign away. More than you like.
Do we have a settlement on the contract? Or rice?
Baker Tilly, not yet, not tonight.
When?
Um, maybe January. Um, maybe February, depending on.
What are your type of snacks today?
Do, uh. Are you?
Do you want your big pork steak club?
You don't come by?
Either way.
I'm by there all the time. It seems you thought that if I called this back, I could come past your house. I'll start with the call text even in the junior field and see, check that house on the corner.
Go back out.
Go back out.
Well, you're not doing my house check.
You ended up meeting on Monday with Callie, right?
Uh, in our kitchen.
Did you email him?
Did I email you or no?
What time?
Three thirty's?
Dogs are doing good.
He's just coming, he's coming in to explain what Ted did, because Ted's, uh, no.
Is, uh.
That's good, Johnny.
Is the, is the work guys coming for that?
No, no, because we don't have the information yet. Once we get the information for it, along.
You said three thirty.
Yeah, so?
With the seven?
He's part of it, you know, like without the day, we're like fourteen by two suns, huh?
Were you, where you going?
I don't think.
One's got each one, it's, uh, three of them. But they're both three of those and then, um, we have the sun and the lamp.
Your son. I'll forget they're here.
Yeah, he's, he's doing good.
Three, you gave him one.
He got a puppy kicking.
Yeah.
But, uh, he's really.
Public hearing for an hour.
It has to be an hour?
Uh, well, we posted it at six, I don't know when we can end it, but I'm gonna let it go at least past six thirty. Because typically our joint ones are at six thirty.
Expect to no longer come in time.
Right, well. Well, you just got air, do you want to run quick?
I don't think we've ever had a year before, not me or nothing.
I don't think people really seem to care as much or involved or wanna take the time to, you know. Get busy with their own affairs. I don't know. Yeah, we make a lot of that, Victor, we had some tacos last night. And crock pot and then a cooked all day and the pecan sauce.
Wow.
Some shrimp, first shot. Each of ours.
Eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
I did this year, I did the last three, four years. But probably. At that time, it was my dad and so I'd go down and spend the weekend.
Twenty twenty-two.
And Iowa was good, right? Saturday, right?
Four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in case we were one.
December. Three, we. No. We thought it was.
We've been paying the principal, we did pay off the wall and this past year, did you know that?
They get like twelve thirteen a year. Are the bucks that much bigger down there?
Yeah, there's pretty.
Yes. And I think.
Fields and that, you're paying interest on the land.
Yeah, I thought we only paid interest on the.
That's how originally.
The debt line.
Yeah, maybe for.
But you're thinking about now. That's a very nice one. It goes up again for a little while.
Till twenty twenty-five.
Then you start to.
The plateaus until twenty thirty, there's one kicker in the draw.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-eight is the magic number.
Twenty-eight?
Yeah, it starts coming back down after twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay.
One of the guys, he, uh, he has a name deal already.
A bowling party right here.
Yeah.
As long as the next lord doesn't post in debt.
Can't lose farm days, crop damage days.
Well, because there's money put in the budget to do an assessment, because we are under assessed.
You know, if we get, let's say, eight percent improvement. It also doesn't mean we have any more debt ceiling. We're so close on our.
Cause a girl might get another hundred thousand dollars.
This close to.
I know. Which is what people need to understand. We don't have.
Yeah, it's okay.
This is all stuff from.
There aren't that much way over a whole years ago.
There isn't. There isn't.
In Iowa?
What was proposed in the budget, we couldn't even.
Has family donors, they go out there with guys.
Yeah, we couldn't even get. Even if we took out more loans, we couldn't get.
Took a lot of gear down there.
I came into the village in two seventy and I sat through the paper till review where they came in and actually gave the review. Took like five. I didn't sit in the corner and, I mean, it was a serious.
Three corn.
Debt ratios, we actually had.
Oh, yeah.
It was an eye opener. I didn't even try to trace back to ask why, it was just, just another year there.
And how we got there.
It came later, but it was just the astounding amount and how, how long we were.
Can we catch your people, last December?
Well, that's the thing. It just doesn't go away.
It has been a fabulous four years working on the budget. And I hope you guys find a great replacement to hold the budget true to where it's gone these four past years.
We done, we done tried to do our best.
I'm just asking that you continue when I step away.
Taxes and taxes. We don't get.
Then that you need to continue to do that.
Brought celebrations into the, the fold with the correct numbers for the village, since the village has had.
So if any of you are following the social media and why there's such a huge increase, Warren, would you like to give an explanation as to why we had to include celebrations into the budget for the first time ever, which is driving the number that people are seeing and flabbergasted about?
Right, um, Baker Tilly told us that in order to continue on with the celebrations committee, as it is, their financials have to be accounted for in the village budget. Even though they are not using any taxpayer dollars, they're fully self-funded and revenue generating. Um, with some of their revenues going back into the park system, which is why they are under the culture and recreation line item and why that boiled up as a budget, because we had to put their revenue somewhere.
But their revenue when put into the budget was a complete wash, the money that they are bringing in was completely expensed, so that it was a zero net gain and net loss.
Yeah, just obviously amplifies that culture section by two hundred grand.
We didn't put any taxpayer money that way, not more than what.
Revenue was not any expenditures.
Correct.
It was there, but they were running accountable for.
Right.
The last ten years.
So now.
Now it's there.
All of the celebrations, financials will be in the workhorse. Um, Alina's been working hard on that, but getting everything up to speed and should be good going forward.
And Jeff, you were talking about the amount of money that is put away to our general debt obligation, being that when we started here, we were over five million dollars in debt. And this year alone, the number increased of how much we are obligated to pay towards that debt.
Of payment, yeah.
Correct. There's also money that we put aside in the budget for possible development, as well as the assessments that has to be done, because we are.
We're below the point nine requirement by the state.
Correct.
You're talking about the full appraisal stuff?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we had to budget, what was it, thirty-six thousand dollars for twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
To get the appraisals started in twenty twenty-three. And then there's a five-year commitment on that, too.
And do we put money in to help for, um, fixing the road that we're going in with Vernon to fix?
Uh, a slight amount, I think it was twenty thousand, and we're gonna take the rest out of our LGIP.
But no loan to pull?
No loan.
And you pay for without going into debt?
Yeah, we've had no loans in the last four, five years.
Since twenty seventeen, I believe.
We paid off the citizens' bank loan that was taken out, uh, was it sixteen or sixteen or seventeen, there was a couple of them taken out to get through payroll at the end of the year. We paid off one, and we haven't, we've not taken out any loan.
The other one is paid off this year.
And the other one will be paid off.
In twenty twenty.
Probably mid-summer.
It'll be paid off at the end of the year.
End of the year. So we're paying off debt.
So that two loans paid off.
Two loans and no, no increasing.
In the four years that I said here.
Plus, we've, we've had money to, uh, help with our, our study on the well and sewer, uh, for development. We did that, we paid for that without increasing any kind of taxes or debt or anything like that. So basically, we're paying down debt and we're, we're not raising taxes and we're paying off, paying off things, we're still moving forward with things that we studied years ago for sewer and water. And, uh.
And yes, I would first say that, yes, I did propose a decrease to the police salary wages, and that is because Vernon, who's now next door on Vernon Village, does now have police service and we have been serving them and they now have a full-time officer. And we can use them for mutual aid and we needed to put the money elsewhere into the budget to make it work, because we are at our debt limit and couldn't raise taxes um, much if we wanted to, to get to where people wanted or felt they needed to be. So it's really about looking at.
We didn't cut anything from the fire department budget and we gave rank of five police officers all raises.
Yeah, five point five percent raises.
You know, we, we, it's not like we're defunding them, we're just reducing some coverage.
Knowing that there is still coverage in the area through Vernon and other surrounding municipalities. We are a village of thirteen to fourteen hundred people and by law do not have to have the services, but as a board, we do feel that it is important to have these services. So there is money assigned for those services.
Right. And you know, to squish the rumors, we gave the fire department a hundred percent of what they requested anyway. We did not change it one penny.
Tony, um, to address your question before, on the two big government bonds, um, we've paid off seven, little over eight hundred thousand on the principal.
What page you?
Page twenty-seven at the bottom.
I don't know why, I have my.
That's, that's, that's the December thirty-first of twenty nineteen. Um, so I've got to imagine we're encroaching on that million dollar mark off of the debt.
Okay, alright, great.
But that, yeah, our, our principal and interest keeps climbing for the next three or four years.
This is the, twenty-two is the first big jump.
Yeah, well, every, every year it steps about twenty to thirty or forty thousand dollars.
That jumps for another couple of years.
Then it plateaus for three years and then starts dropping again, so.
There's a lot of there. Based on the fact that these loans were set up initially, interest don't. Yes, for the first few years, so there's nothing going on in the.
And when we were in that stage, our taxes went up thirty-two percent.
Yes.
Sixty percent two years in a row. And that was enough, and that should be able to help cover the costs of the expenses of this village for many years. Thirty-two percent is an astronomical tax increase.
Normally, when we have interest, interest-only loans for a certain period of time, is you have the expectation that you're going to have income, taxable income, coming back off of that.
I think that's what they have reflected in the, uh, the housing market.
Yeah. I would assume that there had to be a reason behind those.
Yeah, we will start working on streets this next year. So in, in the following year, there's a plan there, so without going into great data doing so.
Been trying to work with Vernon to knock out some, you know, shared roads that we have with them that are in need of repair and, you know, share the costs, so we don't. You know, roads are just so darn expensive.
Makes perfect sense to look at it from a shared services aspect and go in as a group effort to try to get a little group discount on some. Maybe another rehabilitation of roads that are necessary.
I mean, if you look at the boundaries for both Big Ben and Vernon, it's like. It's got to bring, it's like, it makes sense to work something out to get mutual benefit on both communities.
Wouldn't make any sense to pave the north side of the road and leave the south side unpaved.
No, that's, it all kind of started with Sherry. Um, Vernon said they were paving it, they asked if we were, and I'm like, well, it wasn't on the docket, but if you're paving it, it's gonna look pretty funny as a checkerboard.
Well, we couldn't do it this year, which they.
Right.
They may put it off to next year. If you wanna see a road that's half done by one village and half not done by another village, drive a Partesian, you know exactly where the boundary is, right there, because.
That's all coming, I know.
Well, that's, that's.
I'm thinking Guthrie, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, Guthrie turned out pretty nice.
They did a really good job on it.
It was pretty, pretty bad there for a while, but it did turn out nice.
It was interesting what they did though first.
Yeah.
Yeah, that patch job?
Yeah, I was like, I sure hope they're not leaving it like this, cause that was horrible.
We don't know if that was like the intent and then they realized how bad it was.
No, I think they had to save out some of those big ones.
The foundation stuff, so it was total.
Oh.
Well, and there's a lot, these are very old roads and it just takes time and money and, uh.
Takes a lot of money.
We just don't wanna go into that kind of debt to, to do that. We'll get there. Little bit at a time.
It's not that we don't want to, we can't.
We can't, yeah. If we didn't have this monster debt A and R, we could do a lot of stuff.
There was good intentions we put in, but it's a smirkin' award right now. Maybe in our lifetime, we'll see. It be hooked up.
There's possibilities, I mean, we're doing the studies and, and, uh, talking to people that wanna develop and there's still stuff going, so it's.
We've got people looking into possible funds, you know, with the federal infrastructure bill passing.
So good news.
We, we need money from somewhere.
We got people getting developed this next year, so.
Hopefully. I mean, as, as long as their financials stay solid.
Yeah, yeah, it, uh, there's a lot going on behind the scenes and and, uh, good stuff, not all bad.
What about Starburst?
Yeah.
I think we could tell you last time I had one of those. Nope, no, don't do that.
Right, for it.
Right, yeah. Take the cherry strawberry.
I had a piece of my kid's twenty-first birthday, birthday cake over the weekend and that thing was like a shitty bomb and I thought. And they wanted it, it's been for a while.
We got a bunch of that.
Twenty-first? Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, wow. Any special? I don't know.
He's a very easygoing kid.
He's still in college?
Yeah.
Good.
Took him to Hibachi for his birthday.
Hibachi? Did you get him a drink?
He doesn't.
No.
We got him to get a little squirt of, uh, Saki, like when they're doing their little flip, flip stuff and they squirt Saki at you. He was gonna die.
Oh, are you lucky, huh?
No. He's, he doesn't drink.
I'm starting all the wine. You give a look down there, man, just got us a limit.
Especially, uh, especially, uh, the grade that they use to cook with, I'm sure it's not as good as the normal stuff.
So going into twenty twenty-two, we were in debt four point five, six, five million dollars.
No.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Going at twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Michelle.
One debt. So at the end of December thirty first, our general allegation debt outstanding was four million, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Five hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Like one point, we were over five point four?
We were five one when I started here.
Excuse me.
I freaked out.
That's, that's on the tape, by the way.
Want some Saki?
No. It was a nice little shot for, uh, Jimmy's Grado on the paperwork your manager was saying.
Yeah, one of our managers, he has it like twenty-five percent. Yeah, we did twenty-five percent Monday and Tuesday. It was, it was fun. Yeah, if you're not good, you're just a good crowd.
Thank you, attention, I reward her.
Yeah, shame.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Brennan.
Anytime you go, it's like.
The Freeman showed up that Tuesday night and gave a call in because we were pretty busy, so I went in for a bit. And then I think it was just Avr, I think it was yesterday, no, it was today.
Whoa, you were making panzas?
Uh, no, I was cooking them though.
I've seen it, I've seen it happen.
Steve?
I've made them.
You should have bought us some for tonight.
We could place an order.
We would have had a time to burn, probably owed us. Yeah, so that was good. There's a bunch of, I mean, so many restaurants in the area doing it. It's just awesome to see. As of Monday, the fund was at two million dollars, you know, and then that, uh, that one family foundation did a Foch. It's actually my ex, uh, boss. I know his family very.
Oh, really? And they're gonna chip in a million?
They're gonna, they're, they are matching any contributions that started Monday through Saturday, up to a million dollars. So, I mean, even if.
Have they hit a million yet?
I haven't heard. Um, I would assume they, they may have. I mean, you saw like, uh, Channel Twelve did like a phone bank the one night for a couple hours. That raised a bunch. Um, so that, that, that family's so solid. They, they would, they'll contribute the million dollars regardless.
Who, who are they?
Um, there's just a local family that's been around that's very, uh, been very successful. They've got their hands in a couple of different businesses. Like, I know the one, uh, Tom, my ex-boss, and he's got a, a computer type business. That's, you know, that he's been involved with, uh, multiple of them, but he part-owned in this one. That's why he used to work for him two different times. But his parents were successful, you know. Whole family's got really good heads on their shoulders, so.
What was that name?
Foch. Foch, the Foch Family Foundation is the one that contributed, so. Really awesome family, it's awesome.
I'm so excited to see our debt this far down.
It helps.
Coming down?
Coming down.
Wait till, wait till budget time this year for twenty-three. People have two more audits in by then.
I don't want to have to just hang out to see those.
You're welcome anytime. We're open to the public, you know.
I wouldn't stop it, but probably not.
Oh my. Mid, middle of the summer, end of summer, peak baseball season.
Probably not. You know what?
Tune in on YouTube.
If it wasn't during baseball season, I'd be like exempt myself for those months.
We can do that.
Baseball goes year-round now.
It does, but they're not games. Like, there are practice tonight. I can miss practice. I'm not, I can't miss games. They're only young ones. I'll get older and then maybe I can devote more time.
Have you been to that new facility on National?
My daughter's there right now.
We were there Saturday with my grandson. It was like, holy cow.
My daughter played in a tournament there.
It was basketball, we were there for it.
We can play softball tournament.
Unbelievable.
Yeah.
We're in National.
Pretty cool.
National race.
The oldest, third least, they don't school there or whatever. They love it.
That building is just general.
Two stories, they do like full baseball fields, PT and stuff too, don't they? Do some kind of.
They do.
Yeah. That's how they did that and then they're doing like pickleball and stuff.
Or the feet of Wisconsin.
Cheer.
It's owned by the surgeons group and, uh, they're doing the physical therapy there, yeah.
I think that was you that put that in, or wasn't?
It's my email, he's put it in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, you should just look. It's got a couple snack bars in there, it's good. Pickleball is there?
Pickleball, yeah, they're doing pickleball there.
Cause we've got a lady that wants to donate a fairly decent amount of money for us to fix up the tennis courts into pickleball courts. So.
I mean, they're multi-purpose. Even, even though you say it's pickleball, it's really not.
Well, Quanah High School.
Basketball, whatever.
Their tennis courts flipped to pickleball, so they do like tennis on some, on half of the courts and pickleball on the other half. And they just bring in, like, they have drop slots to put these nets in and they play on half of them.
Well, that's what I want to find out, because we're more than willing to do it, I think. I mean, you guys are. But I need, you need to know.
Tennis courts, I haven't given you legs all, that's hard.
No, but if we got people who don't need to bring them up to pickleball's plans and they want to use it and have their groups come over, why not? Cause it's just kind of a, not much there right now.
Yeah, it's, it's like, um, it's like tennis, but you're using like a wooden paddle, almost like you're doing pong, you know, or something like that. They use like almost a wiffle ball.
There you go. That's a good description, a human version pong.
Yeah, that's, that's good to describe. You can have like two-person teams and.
Is it, is it kind of like, uh?
It's the same length of.
You're using the pong type of paddle, wooden, wooden type of paddle.
But what's, what does that, they use a little.
It's a small.
Lumber ball and you're inside.
Oh, you're thinking.
Handball or racquetball.
Racquetball, yeah.
No, that, that's like racket use, that kind of.
Kind of.
Or like a big pong.
Yeah, just oversized ping pong paddle.
More of a wooden paddle.
Yeah, yeah. Think it's a little, think like ping pong, just like that, just a larger version of it.
Never heard of it.
It, it really gets your cardiac going.
Does it?
Cardiac. Cardio.
Pick, uh, pickleball?
Nah, I think he added a ball right on it.
It'll, it'll test you real fast.
Maybe you can help us get the court design.
Cardio, sorry.
I liked your first, I liked your first one better.
We opened this up, see if anybody wants to call in?
There was people watching and commenting, so.
They're wanting to call in and ask questions.
There's hardly, there's two people watching each other.
I think it's me and you.
Yeah, probably.
It is.
Jen let me know that there is some like parkings on there, so they're, they're watching us.
That's good.
That's cool.
Will she come give the comments? Constructive or otherwise? Yeah?
It's gonna be an instant switch at seven o'clock for a camera too, I hope.
Instant switch for.
Turn over into.
This broadcast will end at seven and Village Board won't begin at seven, I hope.
Did the call turn on with P Chief?
Yeah.
Saying I've never ordered from Rugged Legacy.
Ever.
It's a place I want to order a sweatshirt from, from my kid.
Is that like a legendary whitetails type of thing?
It has, it's like a state of Wisconsin with a deer head.
Oh.
I want to order my kid a sweatshirt, but I've never heard of anyone that's ordered from them and I'm so, so hesitant to order online.
It's got a deer head in it?
Yeah, it has a state of Wisconsin with a deer head and a flag on the right arm.
I would crick it, I can make it for you.
You can make this?
Just got my sweatshirt.
I'll pay you, huh?
Chief. Just need the vinyl on the sweatshirt.
Tell me what you want.
I think the, is that the stuff?
Yeah, I use the cricket a lot and then iron it out, basically.
I should have reached out to you when I needed baseball shirts made. I got to get an arm and a leg.
She's got child labor.
That's what Gloria's for. She's not a child, she's thirty-five, thirty-four.
She's someone's child.
She is someone's child, yes. She's the area.
Sharon, you made a post about this one, I was there on the website.
No, on, uh, Facebook. I put one on a website too.
On the Facebook, that's what I need, that's what I'm at.
You'll see my handiwork with my cricket at the Christmas party if you come.
I can't.
Is it cricket or?
I have to be at the orchestra concert. Are you at the orchestra concert that night of the Christmas party?
It's not that talented.
I wish my kid wasn't.
That one on tape.
What?
I said that one on tape. Oh, yeah, who's not watching her?
No, she knows. I'm not a very musical person. I understand the arts and stuff like that, but I'm a very athletic person. And you can throw songs at me all you want. I could never tell you the artist or the name. I did enough to get by and passed a music class in college.
I did a music appreciation.
The Royal Orchestra?
Freezing, um, Frozen Gold.
Is she at the orchestra concert?
She's got stuff that's, I'm looking at the dates right now. They got all kinds of stuff going on in December. It's like, the email is like, my mouth, it's ridiculous. Like, they gotta be here this day.
Are you coming to the Christmas party?
Yeah, I might.
Be flying soul. The, the wife is, uh, being wifey. You got a lot she might be watching.
She's the one viewer. She's gonna always. Come on. He just, I saw Scott.
I, I will let you know, I'm still working, working on her.
One for sure?
Yeah, one for sure.
I would like to be here.
I think he's watching. Sorry.
He loves you.
She told me pickleball sucks and that I'm watching.
Did she really? She's the one viewer.
Telling you, man.
On your own camera. Dave, brother, is watching. Or Tony's wife.
I said, my wife said she was gonna watch, so.
One in twenty-two, they, I forget where I was.
That's why I'm watching my television.
Two years ago, I read a, I read an article like two years ago and there, and the discussion was around cameras and how much more important they are in society. On a given day, how many times you're recorded on a camera and you have no clue whether it's traffic cams or inside of a store.
I bet, yeah.
I mean, you just, you get so desensitized to it.
I especially am at the bank.
Yeah, I suppose.
Dave Brother, he's watching, always something.
Just assume you're always on camera.
I do, yeah.
Your bestest behavior. Or not, I'm just having one of those.
Just on it. Just gonna own it. That's what I tell everyone. Own it, just on it.
It's gonna be a long wait tonight.
That's funny.
No hesitation on the text whatsoever.
She's the one viewer.
I don't know, I don't know if it comes us.
Mobile devices?
It does, because when I, uh, ordered, seeing how many there was.
It's showing two, and I'm still on, so.
So Michelle Lofton, Tony's, Tony's wife's home?
Yes.
Come to the Christmas party, your wife of Tony. We got nice people.
Thanks.
I won't be there, so you don't got to put up with me either.
My wife's really nice, come meet her.
Cheryl is very nice.
She is very nice.
Opposites attract.
They're good, they're good people.
Did you catch that? I said opposites attract.
What were you trying to say?
Had your wife's nice and you're not, or?
Scott's nice.
Yeah, it started at me.
Oh, I gotcha. Okay, I, I missed part of this conversation.
Cheryl's nice.
Gotcha, gotcha. I'm following, I'm trying. I, you know what? Yeah, I, when he dropped off the keys, the day.
And he's like, you're shooting your axe. And I'm just like, I'm shooting.
Yeah, you want to see a picture?
Yeah. I think it was.
It's been multiple times. Another one time this week. And even this was yesterday.
So what are you playing?
It's just, uh, slot machines. This was two weeks ago.
Is that the same machine?
Uh, no, one right now, but the same machine.
I hate.
The bubble tricking well.
I know.
When I walk in that room, a couple of girls even recognize me now, it's bad.
Is that potting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been on.
Is it still smoking down there?
No.
No, they haven't allowed smoking because of COVID stuff.
Smoking.
I've been here down here.
Year and a half.
It actually smells decent.
Yeah, yeah, you don't even have to wear a mask.
Clean.
And tables are open.
Tables just opened up a couple of weeks ago.
What about bingo?
And they took, no bingo yet, but they took down all these little dividers. They had those little plastic, plexiglass dividers on everything and that's all gone.
Really, back to normal?
Back to, pretty much back to normal.
Before you couldn't play, it was a.
Plexiglass around the slot machines.
No.
Not yesterday, I was there. It's all gone. Two weeks ago was there, was there.
We took dirt down on Saturday for his twenty-first.
They must, they must have chokeskinned it.
Crowded or?
Yesterday, no, but I mean, it's all timing based, right? So if you go there at like dinnertime or on the weekends, it's gonna be busy. But that's why I'm going, you know, late afternoon during the.
That's one thing, I didn't like it when it was smoking, I just.
Yeah, I agree.
I just, I can't breathe in it.
No, it's been real nice. Not having that.
It's crazy.
Actually, I think I've never been down to Horseshoe or nothing.
They keep taking my money.
And they got, they got, they got the little, like, scanners now too, which is nice.
Scan them.
Like the body scanner thing. So we walk through, it's almost like walking through like, you know, gun detectors and stuff like that. They just walk through there and they, if, if like, they flag you off to the side, they just keep going. They don't card you or anything like that anymore.
Oh, they do.
Oh, really?
I was gonna say, do they just.
They haven't, they haven't made a lot of time, but the, those like security devices just went in.
Here, are they giving VIP now?
Probably.
They recognize you kind of.
Well, two, two weeks ago when I hit that one, it was no lie, three days later I was getting a call from them.
He's a hard boy.
Hey, uh, there's an executive host. All of a sudden they're like, oh, he won some money, so now they want you, they want to entice you to come back, so they have a shot at it back, you can pick your money again.
Oh, yeah. So we'll give you a.
Within days, within days. They were here, people VIP hosts. Like, funny, I never had one.
No free flight?
No, well, it's Milwaukee. No, free room. Come on, we're allowing to pay the whole golfer, right? Cause again, they want money, they want a shot at the money. And then they're like, oh, let me know when you're in next and, you know, I'll introduce myself and I have a gift for you.
I'm like, well, there's usually a high roller there. You see, you might golfing with Jimmy McMahon and they all expense paid later when it's like.
Yeah, you, you throw some serious money around, there's gonna be perks, that's for sure.
Maybe if we traveled for baseball and softball, it's within hour and a half, I'd rather drive home and sleep in my own bed.
The, the hotel down there's nice, but I was gonna say that I really did not spend any money during COVID, not a lot until last weekend. They took some of your stuff for free, hotel rooms.
Yeah, they're trying to entice.
Get you down there, yeah. Elena, the wife, quit being wifey and she said she'd go to the Christmas party.
Aw, that's sweet.
Aw, that's cause she learned I wouldn't be there.
I hope she wins. I hope she's along on that one, it's one of my centerpiece.
Ooh, what kind centerpiece is it?
Like making, uh, like making jars and using the cricket to make them fancy or.
Can I put my name in the drawing at least? This is not a call that you picked a bad day. I would have told you not that day.
Some have candy, some have lights. It looks nice.
Put my name in the drawing. I'm there in spirit.
Maybe I'll make you an extra one.
Cause it starts at six thirty and her thing's at seven. I thought there were two of them.
There's a cocktail out at the half.
Yeah, I'll take one during the day.
I thought there were two of them and they're armed. Cause I said, I'll go to the early one and then I'll just come get you after the Christmas party.
Come have a cocktail at six.
And then she goes, no. They have to be there at six.
Drop her off.
It's how you wanna go.
Okay.
Let her take her man.
I know, she's, I know. She looks like she could drive. She's totally relieved. I had dreams of her driving the lady.
It's coming up.
The things that keep me up at night.
You still have two of them? You still have two of them? I'm just curious how the transition goes between one and the next.
Then there's three, three people watching.
Maybe he finally picked up yours or did you turn it off?
It might still be up.
As I said, popped in for one second.
I did watch them.
Oh, now it's clicking. Now they.
Why, why, why are we looking at those maps updated? Wasn't Will gonna run the ones horse or something?
Yeah.
It was a lot of time ago. It just happened to think about that.
I think one's a district thing.
Ones that fit that board would be really nice and the background on the board needs to change.
I, I bought that today. I will change it.
Okay. Then I will make this room cleaned out. Okay, then I would like this room cleaned out.
I, we have been working on it.
And I wanna go back to the normal boardroom and I want that table out of here.
So we can also do it on each other's laps?
Yes, please.
Are we missing a table or?
No.
No, there used to be three. There used to be three, and then this was the center table. I'd like to get rid of that table and make it look nicer.
Just the COVID distancing.
What's right behind her?
If you're believing in that, then wear your mask. Here is protected, normally protected, wear your mask.
What happened to your tattoos?
What happened to what?
It wasn't.
Your work? Here's your, here's your mic, mic, mic.
We used to be tucked in here.
Yeah, there's three.
One, two, three. Yeah, we just used to be three to a table.
Either.
We didn't have this luxury, this real estate for these piles of paper.
Well, I had to come prepare to defend my, um, decisions.
What, defend a home, it's not defending.
Well, people are accusing me of wrongdoing and I will defend what I, the choices that I made.
Yeah.
I have support.
They're not paying more taxes because you've made good decisions, that's right. That right there should be a plus. It is to me.
Right?
You should even lower taxes one year, didn't you?
We did.
We did.
We did.
A few percent.
That was nice. Didn't get many thank you cards, but it was.
It's all in the things worth.
Jeff, if you're winning this for thank yous, you're gonna be waiting a lot, just saying.
Hold your breath.
That's like saying you're doing it for the money.
I had to do it for thank yous, I'm not doing it for money, just clarifying.
Gotta figure out the why.
So you let that, let's solve it.